Six fifty-eight, uh, board members are here, staff is here, so I'll call the meeting to order. Let's sound and say our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the regular October school board meeting of the Olds Public School District. We are in the Olds Public Schools conference room. Uh, Director Heimbach is joining by Zoom, all of other board members are present. As well as, uh, Mr. Getz, Mrs. Herring, Mr. Erland, Mrs. Sell, Mr. Beta, and good morning, Mrs. Getcard. And we have three students present who will be making a presentation later in the meeting, so welcome everyone. Um, we've already called to order and said the pledge, um, we have one item to add to the agenda, an action item. Item D, we'll call it the Hub City Roofing Invoice. Are there any other additions to the agenda? If not, uh, is there a motion to approve the agenda with that addition? So Nagel moves to approve the agenda, is there a second? Thor seconds, any discussion, any more changes to the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Um, we've already recognized the visitors, welcome again. Public communication, uh, in your packet, there was, uh, there is a thank you card from Tom Iverson, our twenty twenty-one OHS, Olds Public Schools Hall of Fame in Duxie. Thanking the district and noting that Oaks is a special place. Uh, other than that, wasn't there something else in here? Oh, there was, in, I think in Mr. Beta's report, there was a very nice, uh, communication, but I'll let, I love that. Any other public communication today? All right, let's move on then to the reports. Reports were in your packet, all very nice and complete, technology, food service, maintenance, transportation, activities, personalized learning. Uh, principals and superintendents. Were there any questions or anything anyone wanted clarified or expanded on in those reports? Okay, if not, um, do we want to have the principals highlight their, uh, their reports, I'd like Mr. Beta to highlight that, if, if, if nothing else, certainly the, the letter that you shared in your packet. And if, when you come forward, please come to the podium to speak. Are you hearing everything okay? I'm the only one talking so far, this way, so.
I can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Um, hey, we had pictures here a week or two ago, and, uh, Tyra was mentioning when we're on the seat, just finishing up, she was, no, I just love coming to Oaks. And she praised the kids on how great of a job they did, and this is how she enjoys coming here, I'll smooth everything, I was like, hey, can you send me that, an email? Um, because what I do is I cut this out, and then I have an achievement excellence bulletin board on second floor. Anytime the kids are getting recognized for activities, both athletics, academics, just normal stuff, I post up for everybody to see. So I'll just read her, uh, her review she posted, sent to, sent to me. Says, I photographed a handful of schools, and I must say that Olds Public School continues to have such well-mannered, kind, and respectful students. They do what is asked of them without hesitation and are very well behaved. I appreciate this, it makes my job so much easier, enjoyable, timely. I see so many great gestures of kindness, friendly smiles and hellos, the kids stepping up to be helpful to me and each other. These gestures are wonderful for students to be doing while in school, but also build such great character for the rest of their lives. Thank you, the students of Olds Public Schools for always being five-star, keep up the good work.
Um, anything else you want to highlight in your, um, principal's report?
Um, I guess there's questions, they'll take questions, there's kind of a lot, there's a lot going on, I like to highlight. Um, with the homecoming recap, start testing with deploy hard honor band, I like where they're recognized. You know, Hannah Helgerson, and the trombone, Harry Tyre, and the trumpet, and Isabel Herring, and percussion. And we hold three out of eight spots that were held by Class A student, or Class A school, so I thought that was just pretty outstanding. So, great job to those three and Mr. Lee for getting them ready. Um, yeah, I'll take any questions, if you have questions, the base report is there for you guys to scan through.
Okay, were there any questions on test results, anything like that? Any, any questions for Mrs. Sell on her report that was in our packets? If not, uh, Mr. Getz, you want to, uh, highlight anything that you had in your written report? Or any other feedback you've received from anyone or anything in anybody else's report?
Um, at this point, I don't really have much, the only thing is that Brennan and I did attend yesterday to the, uh, twice ready that we were trying to get to, but Basler sent us to. And it was a really big disappointment on our part, but we sat there all day with stuff that we pretty much already knew. Uh, I was very disappointed, and, and I did reply to Ms. Basler, and she gave me a very political answer back. Um, really had nothing there, every time we tried to make suggestions for improvements, they just told us, just send us an email, send us an email, that was all we got. So I was very disappointed with that, and I expressed my concern about that as well. So you're aware of those, um, we did go to Northern Chaos, it was, uh, for my first time going to a meeting, and I was very awesome to see how other schools are doing things, and I think there was a lot of great things that came out of that, so. Just good highlights there. Appreciation to Greg for putting that together and making sure that that grants.
All right, um, I will entertain a motion unless there are any questions. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the seven reports that were in your packet. Which you had an opportunity to review and ask questions. Uh, Rosendahl moves to, uh, approve the administrative reports, is there a second? Nagel seconds, is there any discussion? Any other questions or discussion on the administrative reports? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. All right, we have a donation request, and this will be, uh, there was a memo in your packet. Mr. Getz and the board from Alicia Klein, Bethany Harris, Riley Huberman, who are DECA students. Who is the leader of the DECA group here today? They're looking at each other. Uh, are you all planning to come up at, at some time during the presentation? If not, come up now and stand behind her and give her her support. Remember, you're on the worldwide web now.
Okay, so, good morning, um, we are here to ask your approval for our DECA project. As stated in the memo, we want to add equipment to our school playground that would be helpful to the visually impaired children coming to our Olds School in a few months.
Uh, DECA is one organization that promotes business, marketing, and leadership. This project could teach us many life skills, help us, uh, not only exceed in DECA, but in our future too.
This would be a community giving project as a competitive, a bag for DECA. Part of the project is to identify problems in your car, maybe install it. With your approval, we will tour the school, find and navigate, and find ideas and get sources to use with purchasing the equipment.
I have a question, if someone wanted to donate to this project, how would they do so?
Um, I think they would contact us, or we were planning on doing a bunch like fundraising, like around Oaks, so then they could probably do that. And like, we might reach out to some like companies and stuff like that. So, just like contacting us.
So, so if I wanted to make a donation this morning and challenge all my fellow board members to do the same, what would I do?
Probably just like, tell us.
We haven't, um, thought about, like, everything, we just came for the.
So I'm gonna make a pledge that I will make a donation, subject to the approval of people. All right, any questions, board members? Monica?
No, I think it's a great idea, the PTO discussed doing this before, but I think passing it on to, um, an organization like DECA would be fantastic for them to learn. Um, not only researching, like, like Ellie said, going to the school of the blind and doing something for future students, but, um, just the fundraising efforts and all that that goes into it, it's a fantastic learning experience.
We haven't, um, gotten that far, because we just wanted to do the fundraising, but I was almost thinking, um, I don't know what you're saying, but, there's like another Mary, or it's like on like the far side, it's not the newer side, but there's like a little place like by the window, I think, because it's not gonna be like a huge thing, it's probably just really low, and like, expensive, yeah.
That's gonna be my next question, how, how big are these stations?
Yeah, and we're going to, um, with the approval, we're gonna go to where the school of the blind and everything, to like see the technical equipment we would need. And do some more research, because we don't really know, and we're even gonna talk to the two, uh, the pairs that are with them too, and then their parents, like, a bunch of other people, okay, how was more.
So, the, the, the actual items to be installed are yet to be determined, uh, through your research.
Okay, and then that will determine our goal for.
All right, well, think big. All right, is there a motion then to approve the request for the fundraising project by the DECA students for visually impaired, uh, playground equipment?
A motion.
Uh, Thor moves to approve, is there a second? Second, thank you, is there any discussion? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes, thank you, you're welcome to stay for, for the rest of our two-hour meeting, two hours. It won't be that long. You may stay or you may go whenever you like. So, the next item on the agenda is the final approval of the twenty-one twenty-two budget. Uh, that was not in our package, uh, but it did not change from what we approved. Uh, we did preliminary approval in August, and then we did a public hearing in September, um, no changes. All right, is there a motion to approve the twenty-one twenty-two budget? And again, we can, we can make changes if we think it is necessary.
If something comes up down the road and you do too, but, I mean, it's like any budget, you're sending it, hopefully that's your guy, but if emergencies happen, you're always able to make adjustments.
But this is, this is what's, uh, what our property tax levy, uh, tax levy from the county will be based upon this budget.
So, and it also helps us guide our spending.
All right, is there a motion to approve? Rosendahl moves to, uh, for final approval of the twenty-one twenty-two budget, is there a second? Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion or questions? Hearing not, none, April, please call the roll on this one. Brian?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
And, Anya? Yes, motion passes five to zero. Budget is approved. Uh, school board professional learning. We did discuss the DPI's, uh, recommended tenant leadership last time, I think some of the concerns were the, the amount of time commitment for board members. We do have in our packet a, uh, a template of school board self-evaluation, which could be used as is or adapted in some way for us to use for ourselves. Uh, which, uh, I think it's in six different domains. And perhaps, we could take the time to, we could spend ten minutes of board meeting and discuss some of those, uh, one domain at a time, uh, and we might find that to be a helpful exercise, is there? Anyone have thoughts, did you have any thoughts or suggestions about this?
The, the experience I've had with this, the previous board that did this for me, uh, for themselves, actually, it's not for me, it's for themselves. Uh, the credit goals for you guys to work on, and it also helped them for some different things of, wow, I didn't know if we were supposed to be watching this as well. So, kind of open their eyes to what they're supposed to be involved with, what they're not supposed to be involved with.
Should we, uh, select one domain that we will focus on for our next board meeting? See how it goes. Just start with the first one? Is, is it contextual, does anybody know what that means? Keep in mind that we do have, um, next board meeting will have a superintendent evaluation. And at some point, we also need to do an evaluation of our business manager, so. Watch your email, we'll see if we, maybe we'll do one of these next time, um, or maybe in March, December. All right? Okay, um, with, I don't know that we really need to take action on that. Okay, so then we added, uh, letter D, Hub City Roofing Invoices. Those, um, Mr. Getz sent us information, you want to lead us through this, this situation?
It's kind of weird, we're, we're hard to explain, because I really am coming into this project after all I really got to see was the project being completed and the final bill coming to me, and I know Dave sat with me when we sat down with Jerry to go through this, and he was really kind of shocked himself, that he, himself, that he even had to be able to come and ask or present this to us, that there's an increase in price. Um, when he did sit down with us, he did say that he talked with, um, Carrie, and I did confirm with Carrie, he did talk with her. Uh, she had informed Craig, but at the same time, it sounded like, you know, that talk was centered more around insulation and shortage of what made sense with the shortage that was there that he talked about with Dave and I, he said that when they met at the high school, there was a big portion of the insurance, he said this is probably the cheapest roof you'll ever have installed because of that. Obviously, that's not our fault that his employee moved up, that would be on him, so he ate that part. But he, what's happening is, the, whenever he purchases some supplies, he doesn't even get a bid until basically the receipts show up, so he's purchasing these lines, and they've made it ten, over what, ten and a half percent increase in price from when he originally quoted us, to when he was able to get the products here on site. I, I guess there's some concerns that I have, is because in its contracts and its agreements that he's, I, I sent to you, it does say that he will do anything that like that, any changes like that would be in writing, you know, so he did not do that in writing. My concern is that if we ever decide to do future business with him, this could hurt that, on top of that, is this, I don't. When Dave was there, he did sound like the bids that you guys received were quite a bit more than what his bid was, so that, that's kind of right true, does that sound right? Dave, were you able to check them out?
I, I didn't find him, but I, I do believe, you know, I remember him, and that's why we took his call, because it was so much. I, I'm gonna say his was about fifty thousand last.
It was well happened.
We had almost, I think we had almost committed to the other one, that this one came in very late.
I think we did commit, we committed and signed, and then this came in later, and and Craig came to the board and said, I, I just feel like I need to see if I can get out of this one, and he did ask, but it was tech that, and they, it was, and, um, they graciously released us from our, uh, commitments, and we were able to take this.
What's the situation, is it, is it fully finished?
It's, it's finished, but there's a spot that's holding water, and that would be something that's separate, these giants and things for us. Uh, I don't know if it drained this weekend, we're gonna look, I haven't had it on yesterday. We were gonna go look and see if the, the one spot that he did a, a check, to see if it would drain. Up on the top of the cafeteria, they have those steep up and downs, in the valley, there's holy water in there. Um, and I, I noticed that, on the end that it's supposed to drain to, it seemed like it was built up a little bit too high. But it really wasn't, it was just that, if you watched the, the lines, they've all kind of started to sag.
So, is this stuff that he just did, or?
Yeah, that's stuff that he had completed, but at the same time, when I spoke to the rocks, and it was dry, so we didn't see the third water standing there. And then all of a sudden, it got rained, so it's starting to show up, we actually caught it one day, we were up on the roof up there, and we looked down and we said, wow, there's a lot of water sitting on there, and it was, there was, there's a puddle of water sitting on each one of those valleys up in that, that hot part. So he, he did do some stuff where he lowered it with some insulation, if that works, it'll be, it sounds like that's just something to come back and do. If it doesn't work, then he's gonna have to build it up kind of like a diamond one, so it drains the both sides, and put an insert another drain. At that day, he said right around five thousand, that was just a verbal quote, so, I would not add too much to that, just because it was a verbal. Um, I've seen that before, where they say stuff, but it doesn't, he always says.
Is this something that we think should have been corrected, or I mean, should have been done with this job that he's doing currently?
I know Dave and I talked about that a lot, is it something that he should have been part of or aware of? I, I don't know if he would have known unless there was actual rain, so when he goes to bid, it went to been part of the bid. Um, but he was willing to come back and fix that. So I, I think there's a, a yes and a no there, is, yes, probably should have seen it, but at the same time, it went to rain, we went to even know it. It's just that it happened to be lucky we were up on the roof at the right time, the right time, right place, right time. Otherwise, we wouldn't have noticed it.
He didn't add or take away anything, he just replaced everything that was there, but I think you're, you wrote that a little bit swaying, you know, over the years. And it may have been holding that water in the past, and nobody had ever noticed it, so.
So, it's not caused by what he did?
No, no. It was previously there.
And I don't know, maybe he, I don't know how you look at that, if he should have checked that closer, and made it drain more, or if his job was to come in and replace what is there, and he did that, but it was water, so.
I would say there's an obligation to do the job, right? I don't think that's too much to ask for somebody, especially for a contractor who does roofs. He should know that, um, in my opinion. I kind of issue with a lot of the things, like, a lot of things weren't done right, and then it's, they did, did them over, and now we're kind of seeing the backside of it, bringing extra bills and things, but, so.
Did we already pay part of the bill? Okay, so, we paid, um, fifty thousand. All right, so we, we signed the contract back in September, more than a year ago. Knowing and expecting that the work would be done as soon as school got out, right? And they started on time, the materials were all in place, or, no.
They're actually still waiting for screws to show up, or our job, but they had enough, and another job to complete our. Yes, supply was the issue.
And that's understandable in this environment, however, um, at the time that we expected the project to begin in late May, early June, and paid a fifty thousand dollar down payment on the project, and at that time, there was nothing said or put in writing about material cost increases. The only communication we had was with regard to shortage of insulation, which was due to his employees' error.
That's, that's what my research on, on our site came up with. That, that was all during the same transition, Craig was gone, I wasn't here yet, so, it was all through that transition, so I think that's part of where this was. If there was more to it, I don't know, but that's just, I, I bless Carrie, she was on vacation when I was talking to her, so I was trying not to give any more of a kind of, so, they would treat me for it.
So, the, the other question is, when we signed this contract a year ago, did he order the product then, and he still get it until now, or he waited until?
I, I don't think he did, because that means that the product was ordered back in September.
I know there was a discussion that he wasn't gonna order it right away because of all the price fluctuations, and so it was rumored that, you know, prices were gonna go down, last year, you know, how it was up and down. So I know he said that we can sign it, so we can get on the schedule, but he was gonna wait to kind of watch and see how the market was before he purchased it. Uh, but that being said, you know, never approved. Um, so then he did purchase some of that, they were backward.
I believe he ordered in March.
And so then, he could have brought this to us in March, or April, or May, or June, or July.
And June, when you made your payment, that was when the material was sorted, uh, the way I understood. Like I said, this is all transitioned, but, to me, that's the time where I would have thought to you about this. And is it costing material, though, like, concern, I don't know, and I didn't ask him, I just hope he was here, so that I could ask him that, like, was it based off of that fifty thousand, based off of what he projected, or was it off the receipt? Because when he came to us, he had numbers written in the site, but it's actually was, of the increase, and that's all the increases came up.
Well, even when his estimate, you know, says that, that's the thing I have an issue with too, I mean, all of his materials, we are guaranteed to be specified, any alteration, deviations, all the extra costs, and I know we didn't alter or deviate from the plan, but, uh, a change of cost, I mean, it would be a deviation from the plan.
Right.
And if he knew that, why, why are we not notified? That's my, my issue.
And, and his answer was that he did notify Carrie.
But nothing in writing?
Nothing in writing.
Nothing in writing.
And that's the concern that I had.
And we, we, we also have a business manager who was not absent at that time, who could have collaborated with him. I, I'm, I'm struggling to just say we should go ahead and pay the overage, and at the same time, I, you know, several years ago, again, we had, wasn't this the same pro, uh, supplier, Dave, or contractor that did the roof five years ago? And we had, okay. So, and we, we were pleased with them, I think, in that project, and I, you know, it's possible we'll need another project, and maybe we need to, maybe we need to keep good relations and work with them, but Kelly, when it says right in your contract that you will confirm in writing any changes, and then it, it comes in writing after the project is done, that's not.
It's so hard, because I, like I said, it was all during that transition, so was there an account that it wasn't complete, or?
But you have spoken to him how many times in the last
Yeah, we spoke quite a few.
Three months, since July, August, and September.
Since then, yes, I have, since I've taken over. I've spoke to him quite a few times, and, like I said, if he was under the understanding that was okay, or, and all Craig said it. Him and Carrie were on the impression that it's gonna be done anyways, so just do it. That's, so that's the reports that I've getting back from our site too, so, if it was said that way, I don't know. Speaking for other people, and through my research.
What are you seeking from us?
To, to either approve it or not approve it, just because this was something that was really done before I was here, if it was before or after, I would have. I guess I would have been asking you to, to look at this anyways, because it's a change into the contract, it's like we have like the sewer project.
So the total increase, the total additional costs from the two projects? Okay, three projects, is sixteen thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars, and the total, excuse me, the total, um, in price of the three projects was what? One seventy-two, seven sixty-nine, so sixteen to sixty-nine.
You're talking the original? Original was one fifty-six-five. It's a ten minute hour percentage.
Oh, oh, so the total would, that was one, right? And he is. And he is, if I understand correctly, he is absorbing the increased cost of insulation that occurred because of his employees' measurement error.
Yeah, yeah, the extra insulation that was missed.
So that's not part of the sixteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars increase? Yes.
Unless he was figuring it into each item, line item. Because when he sat down with, with David, I, he went line item by line item and showed us. This is how much this one up, this so much that one up. The biggest increase was actually in the group, he said. And they were done, that almost, not, do you remember, was it almost double?
Yeah, it was.
That, that was the biggest increase was the group.
So the insurance claim and all that, does that?
That's still in the process. And that's April, you're working with the agent.
Separate from?
Yeah.
The company on that.
Yeah, so, yes. Right, because that was the first question I said, that's gonna come up in the board meeting, did I? Because I, I agree. And that's one of the things that I said, you're asking me to pay sixteen thousand dollars more, we still haven't received a check. And we have work that we have to now do because of all these things. Because I get it, I understand, so. He, he still would like to be paid.
Well, if, if we were to suggest that our administration should negotiate, of course, we, we shouldn't say, well, we, we shouldn't specify a percentage, because then that's what, that's what the end result would be.
Right.
So I, so do we, i- if he, if he had come to you with a, a final bill that was the exact amount of the bid today, would we just write the check and pay it? We're, we're satisfied that the work is done as it should be? I mean, I know the insurance claim is still, okay, so certainly we can go ahead and pay that amount. And perhaps authorize negotiation on the overage. I, I mean, I don't, I know everybody's, the supply chain, everything is tough right now. But you should have had some responsibility to bring that clearly to somebody in writing far before the final bill. Okay, what, does anybody have a motion? Yes, you're hearing us, okay?
Yep, I hear you. I agree with everything that's being said. It's, it's a tough pill to swallow, but as a business owner, I understand the increase in costs and everything lately too. But also when you have that in writing in your proposal, that is, that's legally binding, I mean.
And, and you also want to keep good relationships with, with your.
One hundred percent. And I also understand where there would be confusion in the transition between Craig and Dave there too, and how that could have been lost in translation somewhere, but.
But then Mr. Getz was, he was on board on July first and, and the, the contractor was here on site for weeks and weeks after that, months.
Yeah, he was actually, I don't think he started until August.
Well, they didn't even start till August.
The project?
Yeah.
We didn't use material until, I think, in July.
Yeah, it didn't show up until July or August.
I agree that some of that should be their responsibility to have to, I guess, eat it, because I mean, sixteen thousand is, is quite a bit over and beyond.
Uh, is there a motion? I, I guess a motion I might suggest is that we authorize payment of the original amount and request that our administrative administration negotiates the overages for an acceptable. And maybe, maybe there isn't anything acceptable to him other than the full amount, I don't know.
I think if we were to get legal opinions on this, I don't think we would be held to that. Definitely can negotiate with him if you want to try and keep some working relationship there still and then try and negotiate or just say, you know, like it's. We're gonna have him come back and work for us. I don't know if all this whole project, some of it is, yes, the insurance claim and all that, that is on, you know, his crew. Some of the, as far as, but they're starting and some of that extra stuff, I don't know if that's truly all on there. Some of that's just part of the aftermath. There's a lot of, um, of construction concerns and a lot of same similar concerns that we're seeing across the board. The only thing is to be not able to do this and bargain and do the. But we know and we're gonna have somebody come back and fix others up, right? Yeah. And that's, that would be my concern is that if we're totally gonna take all this away, is he gonna come back and do that minimal amount? He's gonna try and rip the cost of that.
Oh, what was that motion? Okay, pay, pay the original amount and authorize administration to negotiate on the overage. Okay, Thor makes that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Um, Rosendall seconds. And my comment is, again, we, if we were to specify a certain percentage that we would allow him to negotiate to, then that's probably where it would end up. So I, I think we should leave that uh, sixteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars in his hands and do the best you can to, uh, minimize and justify and, and maintain relations for potential future needs. Any other discussion? Any other questions?
I was talking half.
Well, I don't know. If it's at half, then that's probably what it's gonna be, right?
I mean, no, I'm just saying that's, to me, that would be, would be unfair to say he's gonna eat all of it. It'd be unfair to us to pay all of it if we if we suggested meet in the middle.
Okay, that, that, that would be one solution, certainly. Mr. Getz can do better, great. If not, that's his judgment, I guess. All right, any other discussion or questions? Hearing nine, why don't we do a roll call on this too? Monica?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Five? Yes, motion passes five to zero. All right, we'll move on to policy. Okay. The two policies from last month, second readings of FCC restraint or support seclusion and FFL, virtual learning because of weather or, oh no, I'm sorry, I want to, youth patriotic society has access. Uh, April has highlighted a couple of things. There were questions, I think, last time. They entertain a reading for a, a motion for second reading and final approval of, of adoption of these two policies as written in your pocket. Thank you for coming. Good luck. Enjoy your visits. All right, is there a motion for a second reading and final adoption of these two policies? Uh, Nagel moves the second reading and final adoption of FCC and FFL. Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Thor, second. All right, are there any discussion or questions? Uh, I think April or Mr. Getz did some research on the chemical restraints matter.
Yep, and then, uh, the definition does not say that it prohibits it, but when you go down to the section that says prohibition, it does say that we cannot use chemical restraints.
I did notice that too when I went through and reviewed it again.
Okay, any other questions on FCC? If not FFL, there were questions about, uh, written consent by a parent or guardian with regard to those, uh, access to those meetings. Any concern, questions about FFL? If not, uh, all those in favor of approving the second reading and final adoption of FCC and FFL, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Uh, those opposed, say no. Motion passes. We have one, two, three, four, five policies as first readings uh, to be held over for second readings, virtual learning because of weather or other conditions, carrying weapons, GED credit for high school graduation and curriculum requirements, weapons prohibition on school property. Any questions or comments on those?
Uh, yeah, I guess I forgot all this. So this virtual learning because of weather. Planning to use it then if it's in place?
I, I, I think it gives us an option. If we don't have it in place and then we come back to it, we can't use it.
Okay.
So this would at least give us that option to be able to do that. Now, I think things have to be in, into a little bit different situation. We have plenty of a built-in right now, but I don't think we need to worry about that. But if we were ever to get down to a degree in the future, and that's why I think now is a good time to put this in, is that maybe next year your calendar ended up with just enough minutes and then, you know, something, now you can use virtual to make up that. That makes sense. This policy will stay forever, where if you don't do it now and you want to use it three years down the road, it's not there.
I've kind of looked at it, like when we've had flooding issues and everyone on the other side of the river, can they make it to school without a boat? I mean, or an airplane? Yeah, you could, you know, use this as an option for those students, so they don't have to go all the way down the end or anything. It's just.
But it's not like the first snow day, it's like, oh, it's a snow day and everybody, you know, and all your virtual already there.
And that's fine, I don't think there was intent of that. I think the intent was to use some of the days that we have built in.
I hope so.
All right, and remember, these are just first readings. We'll revisit this next month. Any other questions? That, that one is a recommended and it is new. Um, weapons prohibition on school property is what? Recommended, it's recommended. And now we, we already have that, so it's, um, and, and probably, uh, changes are mostly due to school resource officers. Language added related to school resource officers, uh, carrying weapons, that's required. Those are required, so that is just due to law. That's already in place, yeah. Do we need this second?
Not such a big policy.
And that's fine.
That was the discussion.
Yeah, because when I was reading through it, I was like, oh, it's such phenomenal changes.
It is. The only concern was because of the importance of their policy.
Um, you want to comment on the supplementary? Okay, again, supplementary are only, uh, policies that we should only adopt if we really have a need for them. Um, would you want to comment a little bit on the, on this one? You had some personal.
With the GED?
Yeah.
Um, as far as why it's a good one?
Yeah.
It doesn't last, okay. I think this is, it's a good one because of, uh, the big thing is that if you don't have this in place and a student would happen to drop out, you have no protection where they can't, they have to go to the state to be able to get their GED and then they get a state. Uh, where if you have this in place, a kid is really struggling with something and they had a really can possibly hard times, they would be allowed to be able to get their GED, but once they prove that they have that GED, it could come back to us and we would be able to initiate the initial, yeah, that's it. Present them with a diploma from the polls is really what that would do. This would help with that. I know there has been some talk of, and this isn't the, the policy for it, but there is been some talk through law that GED can be used as some defining factors of being able to get credit for classes. I don't think that's this policy at this point in time. I think that's a whole different avenue. A lot of this would be more so for those students. Personal example, example of this, just say you have one, I don't know, it's trying to be personal, but my own daughter graduated as a junior with a state GED and a state diploma and is now at University of Crookston, when she should be in her senior year. So it gives that opportunity as well. I'm not saying that that's what we want to promote. Her situation was a lot different after she moved out and moved in with her mom. That caused a hardship and she was not even allowed to go to school because she was in different situations with her mom. So it caused a lot of hardship to where she ended up dropping out. And if it wasn't for the state GED, she would not be able to go to school.
So the way I understood this when we discussed it is, let's say a student, um, has completed all their social studies requirements and English requirements here at Olds Public School, but they did not complete their math requirements, struggled with math for whatever reasons. Um, if they were then to go take the GED test and pass, they would get a state diploma rather than a school diploma. So this would allow that they could go just take the math part of the GED to satisfy the, um, high school diploma and then we could issue that as, as an example, right? Okay. Okay, so it's here for a first reading and we can revisit it next time. Um, and there's a recommended weapons prohibition on school property. Uh, this is, oh, there's three weapons uh, policies. One has to do with staff, one is students and one is public, right? That's why they all have different, uh, they're in different descriptor groups. And it have this one already. And so, again, being a weapons policy, we felt like it should have a second reading. So those five policies, uh, we, uh, we recommend that we adopt at first reading and revisit next time. Is there a motion for, uh, to approve the first reading of those five policies?
We'll make that motion.
I'm but moves to approve those five policies as first readings. Is there a second? Nagel, seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion passes. All right, the two policies that are on the pink background. Uh, the first one is lease of school property that is also supplementary. For us, you know, it gives examples of like we have extra space and we're leasing out office space and that doesn't really apply to us, but we do sometimes have community groups that use uh, space for church services or fundraisers or chamber activities. And these, this policy would apply for that, right? And we do currently have, if I'm not mistaken, a, an agreement, uh, that we require of non-school users to sign and indemnify and so on. And that would be, I suppose, an exhibitor attachment to this of some kind. Um, the other policy meetings of the board, the recommended change, which we uh, wasn't necessary for us to make was, they recommended that we remove from the policy the requirement that the board set its monthly meeting day. Set its monthly meeting date at the annual meeting.
And to actually put it in the poll.
Yes, to put in the policy that we would meet on the second Tuesday of the month or whatever. We thought it seemed fine the way it was and for, for that reason, we recommend simply reaffirming our, our policy as is, but certainly. We could certainly discuss making that change. So for the first reading with no second readings, we're recommending approval of IAC with no changes or with, with. The changes that are, are presented and to simply reaffirm B C meetings of the board without any changes. Nagel moves to approve IAC as a first reading with no second reason, waive the second reading. As well as to reaffirm policy B C as it is in our current policies. Is there a second? Rosendahl seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Moving on to the minutes of the September fourteenth regular meeting. Oh, yes, and the preliminary, the bu- the, the budget hearing. I was wondering, it just didn't seem right. Well, they are consecutive, yeah, it just seemed like. All right, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion.
Rosendahl moves to approve the minutes of the two main agents in the packet, September fourteenth. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. I mean, aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Reconciliation, balance sheet and revenue and expense reports. These are the historical reports that we're reviewing through the end of September. We typically act on these all together. They were in your package. Were there any questions or anything you would like to highlight, April?
Nothing that comes out, I guess. Sorry, next month I'll start trying to put notes in. Are over higher or lower than.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the reconciliation, balance sheet and revenue and expense reports through September thirtieth as presented? Thorpe moves to approve those three financial reports. Is there a second?
A second.
I'm but seconds. Any discussion? Are there any questions or discussion on those three reports? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes and the financial reports are approved. Finally, the approval of bills. You have a couple of pages, several pages of invoices listed. In your packet. In addition, there was another email that came yesterday.
And yesterday is there was.
Oh, and that was paid with the Absor Fund.
Is that something we already have, we had it at the start of the year or not?
They had it at the start of the year, we just got billed for it.
Any other questions or discussion? Oh, we don't have a motion. Are there any questions before we have a motion? Is there a motion to approve the bills which were both in your packet as well as the additional invoices which were emailed on Monday afternoon? Nagel moves to approve the invoices. Is there a second? Rosendahl seconds. Now, is there any, are there any questions or any further discussion?
That policy where was a one here?
Yeah, that's, it's just a trial thing. We're still working on getting it set up, but it's, it's finally in the works of getting it set up. We'll have a good second semester example of it. I think it will be hopefully running before the end of conferences or end of this. And that'll be physical science on the high school side. That's what we're looking at trying to do is that pilot and then also elementary, VR title one. I don't think it's title one or it's something.
All right, any other questions on the invoices? I have a motion, right? Okay, great, thanks. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. A motion passes. Future meeting dates, our next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November the ninth. That is the date. We will have to complete our first superintendent review. If you remember in the past, we have. We have ten domains from the superintendent's job description and what we have been doing is evaluating the five in the first half and the other five in the second half. And discussing this with Mr. Getz, he and I agreed that it would be useful for us to evaluate all ten. Both in the fall and again in the spring at least for this first year so that. We, we just have a broader, we, we were, we were required and forced really to, to give him a, a broader evaluation. And we'll, we'll see how that goes. And so I will be sending you the, the tools which I've done in the past. If the job description was not changed, if, if it was, it was only tiny changes. From prior years, so I'll be sending those out to you very soon and I would ask that you get them to me by. October thirty-first so that I can compile them. Are there any other, anything else for the good of the order today? If not. I'll declare the meeting adjourned at seven fifty-six.